Reading to order, roll call.
Councilmember Barnworth?
Here.
Councilmember Mendoza?
Yeah.
Councilmember Alisa Martinez?
Yeah.
Mayor Proten Tucker?
Yes.
And Mayor O'Farrell with the absent for the record.
Okay, please stand for the. Mendoza?
Ready, begin. Just to the flag of the United States. To the Republic which stands one nation under God. End of this with the tears.
Okay. Any adjustments to the agenda? All right, thank you. Public comments. Another city attorney report.
The city council did meet in closed session and discussed the old post office property. Direction was given to the negotiator. The city council discussed labor negotiations regarding each of the employer organizations listed on the agenda. Direction was given to the city manager negotiator. The council also discussed Superior Court case ZCU zero zero two three five five. And direction was given to council. There was not discussion of the anticipated litigation, and that concludes my report.
All right, thank you. Public comments, there is a time limit of three minutes. For anyone wishing to address the city council on any matters. Is there any public comment? Did we receive any?
No public comment via email.
All right, thank you. All right, next is presentations. A one recognitions of outgoing planning commissioner Veronica Harvey.
Good evening.
All righty. I didn't see nothing to read, but thank you for your service on the planning commission. You'll truly be missed. Would anybody else like to speak or you like to speak?
I could. I had the opportunity when I was on the planning commission working with Ms. Harvey, and I just wanted to say thank you. You were very welcoming. You helped me whenever I was starting to learn the process and so forth. And you were always there to offer any advice or, you know, answer any questions, and I thank you for that.
Thank you. I also got the opportunity to serve with you. I think we both got sworn in at the same time. And so I do remember our first few planning meetings. So commission meetings were pretty contentious, so. But you definitely have been a leader within the planning commission, and your service has been really, we're really grateful for it, and I wish you luck. Thank you.
I did not work with you on the planning commission, but I thank you for your time and your service to the community. And as everybody says, it sounds like you did a wonderful job serving with them, and I've seen the meetings you do a great job. You will be missed, and thank you.
Thank you. Just as that attorney for that commission, I can tell you, we spent a lot of hours together. Your commissioners all do a ton of work, and every single time you came in with the maps and the questions, and they're incredible discussions, and you will be very much missed by me. Thank you.
How many years were you on the planning commission?
This is going on five. Five years, so.
Well, that's pretty. That is pretty.
What's that?
Yes.
That there are people who do things for the right reason. Service on the planning commission is one of those thankless tasks. I've sat through many a planning commission meeting as the city's attorney as well as city manager, and I often find myself wondering, why do you do this? You know, it's not mandatory. It's not school that you have to go to, so I'm, it's always a nice reminder that there are folks out there that do, that are motivated by the right thing and to do the right thing. So Veronica, thank you for your service and good luck to you and your family.
And it did have something to read on here. And presented to Veronica Harvey in recognition of your service to the city of Imperial's Planning Commission twenty nineteen to twenty twenty four.
And I just want to say thank you to all of you. I want to thank the city council for leading the city in the direction that it's going. Having been a resident since twenty ten, I can honestly say that this is the best city in the valley, and I feel we model for the rest. And so I am very humbled to have been appointed in the position as a planning commissioner, and I'm sad to go. But, you know, I have to, and I want to thank. I want to thank staff because staff is so at times not really recognized for all the hard work that they do. And basically bringing all of these projects to us to be super well informed for us to make the best decisions for the city. And with that, I really, you know, my heart goes out to staff, a lot of you that I've known for many, many years. And to my colleagues, the planning commission. It's a great group, it's fun, we're very different, and sometimes it gets heated, and sometimes I'm like, oh, my gosh, I know I'm about to, I'm about to start something when I ask this question. But that's what we're there for, and I think, you know, you all as a council are, you know, model to us the way that we should be. And I've learned so much from all of you, and having worked closely with Ms. Bernworth and Ms. Mendoza. I'm so happy to see you both, you know, having worked with you, and then so excited to see you both move to council was a good thing. And thank you to my city clerk who has always answered all my questions, and, you know, when I make a mistake during a meeting, you know, especially sitting as a chair this last time, you've been so patient with me, so thank you so much. And I'm really honored to have spent this time with you all, so thank you. It's in a very pretty box, and I said, give her the box. Thank you.
All righty, up next is A two presentation by Darlene Casio. Director of Marketing and Community Relations regarding goodwill partnerships in the Imperial Valley.
Hi, good evening, thank you for having me here today. I'm not sure if you're aware of the fact that Goodwill Industries of Imperial County is opening its first location in El Centro on Wake Avenue where the Lucky Store used to be. And so I'm here to introduce you to our nonprofit organization. So our mission is to provide employment and training opportunities to people with disabilities and other barriers to employment. This is the reason for the existence of our social enterprise. So our donation center and our retail store fund our mission. Our core values are credibility, creativity, and collaboration. Credibility basically is that we will do what we say we will do. Creativity is to try new ideas in order to improve any aspect of the organization, and collaboration is we work with different people with different skills. We work together to get the job done. Our donation centers are where we accept donations of textiles and houseware products from the community. Again, we accept these to fund our mission, and so our first donation center in El Centro opened on April sixteenth, and we have been collecting donations on a weekly basis. Recently, we have been experiencing people leaving their donations while we are closed. We are working with the El Centro Police Department and our own security to inform the public of our donation center hours to correct that issue. That is not something that we welcome and something that we plan to get control of. There's a few short videos in the presentation just to give you a better idea of what we do.
Thanks for coming with me to donate my things to Goodwill.
No worries. Wow, this stuff is like brand new. Why don't you just sell this?
Well, because donating to Goodwill helps people find jobs. Goodwill has free employment programs that help people find work either at Goodwill or at other local companies.
Wow, you know what, as soon as we're done here, let's go to my house. I've got some nice things that I want to donate to.
Yeah, let's go. Hi, how can I help you today?
We've got some things we want to donate.
Yeah, let's go. Thanks for coming.
We consider our retail stores a training classroom, so a lot of our employees do not have any work experience. We welcome that, it gives us an opportunity to train and coach them and establish a career pathway for them so that they can move up within the organization or promote within the community.
What do you think?
Wow, you look incredible. You're gonna get that job for sure, but that outfit, it looks pricey.
Oh, but that's the best part, I'm at Goodwill. They've got great brands at great prices.
What, really?
Goodwill even has outlet centers in Escondido, Ojai, and San Ysidro. You can even shop online. Trust me, you're gonna love it here.
I also brought some of our social media posts. We have had some influencers from the area reach out to us and ask to collaborate with us, so we kind of want to show you what that engagement looks like currently in San Diego and what we hope to duplicate here in the valley. This video is of an outlet center that we have in downtown San Diego, and the reason that we brought this video is to give you kind of an idea with the outlet center portion. Influencer was kind of demonstrating the types of apparel that you can find at our stores. We're really known for having a well organized and clean store, so our aisles are sorted by gender and by color and by size. We have an e-commerce platform, shopgoodwill.com where you can shop online and still support the same mission. A lot of the collectibles that we receive through our donation centers are sold online. So although you will still find a lot of name brand products in our stores, our higher end items are sold exclusively online. You know, and the online platform is also a great opportunity for training with so many companies going online now. We really believe that those skills, those technical skills that we're teaching these individuals will help them get work in the community or move up. These are just a few examples of some of the things that we've sold online to give you an idea of what you can find there. Our outlet centers are very different from the retail stores in that they have these blue bins, and the bins are full of apparel, family apparel, and also housewares. They can be purchased by the piece or by the pound for as low as a dollar a piece. Our community employment center is where our career advisors work. They help job seekers with their job search, so everything from filling out an online or paper job application to preparing for the interview, creating a resume, and also taking free soft skill workshops. So those workshops might be like workplace communication or conflict resolution, providing exceptional customer service. Things that we may think come naturally are really skills that are being taught in the workplace today, and they are also skills that employers are finding that job seekers are lacking. We recently released our mobile community employment center, and we intend to use that here quite a bit in the valley, reaching out to communities like Imperial and like Brawley, and making our services available through the mobile employment center. So we, you know, would really like to consider having a pop-up shop and a mobile employment center at some of the three big events that the city of Imperial has. And we think that's a great way not only to reach the community with our services, but also to introduce them to our social enterprise. This is the last video, and I only have a few more slides left. As I mentioned earlier, we give every ambassador, as we call our employees, a career pathway program. We talk to them about their goals and what classes or workshops they need to take to reach their goals. We have a supported employment program, that program is for people with disabilities, primarily developmental disabilities. They begin their career with us in a group setting with a job coach, and then the plan is for within three years' time for them to move on to independent work. I mentioned earlier our youth and young adult program. This is primarily for people ages sixteen to twenty-five who may not have work experience. Our paid training program is a three-month hands-on program in retail donations and e-commerce where the people that are filling these positions may not have work experience, so they're being paid to learn the job. We have a veterans program which includes wraparound services, so we connect the veteran to housing, to medical care, to anything that they may need to succeed in addition to the employment programs and services. This is where we currently are with the retail store outlet center and employment center on Wake. Signage will go up this week, and the painting should be finished early next week, and the fence will come down. This is where the donation center will be, this is the rear of the building, actually, you're looking at the backside of the donation center. And this is reviewing some of the things that we already talked about, the layout of the store, where donations will be accepted, and where the outlet center will be. And we also will have a recycling department, so we will be accepting electronics at the donation center there in El Centro. All of the components, working or not, are repurposed and kept out of the landfill. We partner with Dell for this program. I know I'm close on time, so I'm just gonna skip this video. We really care about the environment, and so we take advantage of solar panels, LED light bulbs, and like I mentioned already, recycling electronics, and everything that we can do to be good stewards. And then we are on Facebook and Instagram, I hope that you will give us a follow and reach out to us with any questions or input that you have. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, up next is B consent agenda. All items appearing under consent agenda will be acted upon by the city council. With one motion without discussion, should any council member or other persons request that any item be considered separately, that item will then be taken up at the time as determined by the mayor.
I'll make a motion. I'll second it then.
I got a motion and a second. Stacy. Please vote.
Motion carries four zero.
Next, we go to public hearings, see, public hearings. Public hearings for the purpose of adopting the vehicle miles, travel, BMT, and CEQA threshold study as recommended by the planning commission. We will open the public hearing at seven twenty-nine. Next is staff report presentation PowerPoint presented by Mingar Association Incorporated. Presenter O'Ton.
Good evening, Mayor Proten Tucker, the all of our council members. My name is Fred Minigore, and I'm the senior project manager and the principal of Minigore and Associates, Inc., here tonight before you to make a presentation with regard to the ratification of the VMT guidelines for the city of Imperial as a municipal corporation in the state of California. First of all, I wanted to really thank the city staff and the director of community development for helping us in coming up with the best suitable VMT thresholds for your city based upon the demographic and socioeconomic characteristics of your city. Now, very briefly, I wanted to go over a couple of quick items. The first one is, as you will know, CEQA. This is a part of the California Environmental Quality Act that every city in the state of California, there are four hundred and eighty-four cities within fifty-eight counties. And you, within the county of Imperial, is mandated by the Governor Newsom's mandate, which went into effect July first, twenty twenty. So this is in full compliance of the changes within the California Environmental Quality Act. Now, as a part of the CEQA process, under the Senate Bill seven forty-three, every city in California, as I mentioned, four hundred and eighty-four cities, and every county, fifty-eight of them, and all Caltrans districts, which we have twelve of them, they all have to comply and conform with the VMT. Contingent upon either if it's the county board of supervisors, if it's a city, the policymakers like yourselves must approve it before it becomes the law of the land for your city.
Yeah, and what if we don't approve it?
It is, okay.
We don't have a choice.
It is the, it is the discretion of your, your city council by the majority vote to act upon this. Yes, you do have the option of not approving it, but...
Then we lose funding probably.
The number one issue that you are going to be facing is if anyone is contemplating to build any development within the city boundaries and you don't have a VMT in place and the subject project would be generating vehicular trips that are not per the average or the standard in California, or in this case, in your area, i.e. Imperial County, all the way to San Diego County, then you are going to be exposing your city as a municipal corporation to potential litigations. And I have not seen any cities, as of now that I'm speaking to you, that prevailed.
Oh, I agree a hundred percent.
So, a lot of big cities, city of Los Angeles, I can say city of Urban, I can go on and on, in Orange County, they did not like the mandate because of all the implications that it would create, because of all the problems that it would generate. And because of the, you know, it is, I have to be politically correct. It creates a lot of obstacles for a lot of improvements and more specifically developments. And, um, for that reason, if any city in California would be challenging that basically the state of California would have the discretion, yes indeed, to withhold funding because you are not going to be in compliance and conformance of the VMT. Because it was passed by, by the state assembly and obviously was, uh, passed by the state senate and the governor signed it. So it's the law of the land for the state of California. And I strongly suggest that obviously it's the discretion of you and your colleagues to act upon it accordingly as you wish. But my personal recommendation is that having done tons of these projects and having served 85 cities in California, not to move in that direction. However, I have respect for your, your determination on this.
Thank you.
Very good. So, the VMT refers to a metric that accounts for the number of vehicle trips generated and the length or distance of those trips. In the past, every city in California, like any other cities in the U.S., they used to use LOS, level of service, as the criteria, as the metric, to identify that if a proposed project, it could be a development project, it could be a new restaurant, it could be a new service station, it could be a high-rise, it could be a new stadium. If the proposed action plan would have any adverse impact with regard to the delay, which is the number of seconds that would be added to the existing delays at existing intersections and street segments. So this is in lieu of LOS. So legally speaking, every city has to have a VMT in place. And legally speaking, every project unless it is on the list of exempted projects that I'm going to be presenting to you tonight, that those projects are automatically exempt to go through the process. And I, I made a very lengthy presentation to the planning commission. So I went over all the specifics and all the nuts and bolts aspect of the proposed VMT guidelines for your city. So, so the VMT is gonna effectively after tonight, if, it's a conditional statement, if you decide to move, uh, to ratify what your planning commission back in June, to, July, July 12th, approved it. So, and also to, in order to protect safety and also maintain efficiency of your intersections and your street segments and overall your infrastructure, I included the LOS criteria at the end of the guidelines. So if any developer, any project applicant would come to your city as a municipal corporation to say that, okay, this, our project from a VMT perspective is exempt, or we've been able to mitigate it, then you as a city, you have that leverage, you have that LOS criteria in place to make sure that the safety and efficiency of your infrastructure is not compromised. However, from a legal perspective, that if you disapprove the project, you and planning commission that makes the decisions with regard to the land use policies of your city, legally, if, if you disapprove the project, then only on the ground of VMT you can challenge the applicant, not on the ground of LOS. Because LOS no longer in the state of California, based on what the governor signed off back in July 1st, 2020, can be used on any project to reject them on that basis. From my personal experience in a lot of other counties and, uh, cities in California, I have not seen any project applicant to use that avenue to challenge those municipal corporations. Ultimately, you know that they have to go back to the city council and the planning commission to get approval for their, uh, proposed action plans. As I mentioned, LOS is used as the criteria for, uh, for the, for gauging of the congestion level within intersection and street segments. And your city, like a lot of other agencies, you use A through F and the, you know, the approval LOS in your city has to be A, B, C, or D. Now, Senate Bill 743 that was, um, that was passed, uh, back in, uh, 2020 would, would, as I said earlier, would require that every city should have guidelines in place so that any project applicant can use it. Or even you as a city, if your public works department or your community development department wanted to pursue, initiate any projects and you submitting applications to the state, to Imperial County, to your council of governments, to SCAG, Southern California Association of Governments, or to Caltrans District, I guess you're under Caltrans District 11 in San Diego. So if you submit any application, these guidelines would be the ones that they are going to look into to grant you approval of your request. The same goes with the state and the same goes with the federal government, i.e. federal highway administration and U.S. Department of Transportation. If they wanted to grant you anything, if they are looking for potential adverse impact of the proposed action plan, then they are going to be using your own VMT that is going to be ratified tonight by you. Um, um, Senate Bill 743 started back in 2006 because the state of California was one of those pioneer states like state of Oregon to initiate greenhouse, uh, gas emission controls. So this is a part of the global picture, global warming and what have you. And that's why they started with that initiative. But a lot of organizations, a lot of companies protested. I was in Sacramento at the time and they were arguing not to initiate it, not to approve it because it would dampen a lot of projects in California and it would reject a lot of projects. So that's why it was, it was approved, it was signed up by the governor in July 1st, 2020. So it took him a long time because of all those external pressures. But ultimately because greenhouse gas, uh, emission law was passed, AB, Assembly Bill 32. So by default, the state of California had to have this thing in place. Now, um, so the VMT guidelines that is before you tonight, after it gets ratified tonight, would be the one, would be the criteria that every project applicant has to go through to make sure that it does not have any VMT impact. Again, vehicle miles traveled impact. Now, this is a map that, uh, we took. You are under the jurisdiction of Southern California Association of Governments, SCAG. So according to SCAG, you only have one area in the middle of the city that is called neighborhood mobility area. So just a kind of formal official map that I'm using for information. This map was, uh, was taken from, um, Southern California Association of Governments as well, that it shows all the TAZ traffic analysis zones within your city, that each project, each project applicant, whoever that comes to the city wanna apply, wanna build something. First, your city staff would look into it to see which area is gonna fall under which area of the city. Now, the screening analysis that your city staff would be utilizing in order to come up with, uh, the determination on the project application status would be based on project size, based on retail nature of the proposed project, based on the locality or the exact location of the project. Is it going to be falling within the low VMT areas of the city? Or based on the transit priority area locations? Now, the first one is project size that I wanna emphasize. The criteria for your city is 110. The magic number is that any project that gets, uh, that a project applicant would come to the city, if it is going to generate more than 110 daily vehicular trips, if it's gonna be more than that, then it is not going to be automatically exempt from the guidelines that you are going to be ratifying tonight. You may ask me this question, so where do we stand, city of Imperial, compared with 483 other cities in California? My response to you is that because as I said, I serve 85 cities in California. You are within the range and a little bit below it, which is good. So that means that by ratifying the VMT guidelines tonight, you are not going to be precluding a lot of developments or you are not going to be, uh, you know, creating a friction, if you will, or red tape for any private developer that is gonna come to you and wanna build housing, wanna build low income housing, wanna build a new restaurant, wanna build something new here. That the guidelines are going, you are going to be, you know, in a very good, uh, you know, good, um, how can I say? Situation. Unlike other cities that took a very different position, some cities increase that threshold. Uh, so every city is different, but, but 110 is the one that I do feel very comfortable. And for your information, this is within the range of your neighboring cities in Imperial County. Because we have to look at your city compared with your neighboring cities, not to compare your city with a big city in Northern California. So there are a number of projects that are automatically exempt that your staff is going to just write a technical memo that, okay, the project is exempt. Any existing facilities that you have do not need to go through this process. They are automatically, per the laws of the state of California and the guidelines that you are going to be ratifying tonight are going to be exempt. Number two, if you have an existing facility, but then you wanna make improvement, you wanna expand it. If the expansion is not gonna exceed 10,000 square feet, then automatically that project is going to be exempt as well. I mean, as long as, you know, you have, um, you know, sufficient public infrastructure and it's not within an environmental sensitive area of the city. Then the second criteria is the retail nature. These projects that you see on the big screen are automatically exempt. Service stations, restaurants, commercial shops, grocery stores, public facilities such as K through 12, uh, public schools, libraries, senior housing, affordable housing projects, police and fire facilities are exempt. They don't have to go through this tedious, time-consuming process. Um, uh, governmental offices are exempt, post offices exempt, daycare facilities are exempt, assisted living facilities are also exempt, parks and trailheads are exempt, and, um, transit projects, with regard to transportation projects, transit projects are also exempt. Uh, pedestrian projects are exempt, safe routes to school projects, bike projects, and a safety improvement projects are automatically exempt. That the city staff can make that administrative determination. The third criteria I mentioned with regard to, uh, screening of a project would be if the project is gonna fall within a low VMT area. Now, there is a distinction between residential projects and commercial projects, or, I'm sorry, employment projects. For commercial, for residential projects, if the project is going to be falling in an area that the VMT analysis shows that the VMT, vehicle miles traveled per capita, per person, is 17% or more below the average of your city, which we have all the numbers in the documentation, then that project is exempt. For residential projects, for employment projects, those projects could be exempt if and only if the project's VMT is going to be falling within 15% or, or more below the average regional employee home-based VMT per employee. That you have the maps in the report, in the guidelines, that anybody that comes to your city, wanna do business with your city, can look into it to see, or to make that determination. This is a map of the, um, uh, the, um, the zones in your city that may, that the city staff can make that determination. You see all the blue areas, by the way, all those blue areas that you see on the map are the low VMT areas in your city. That would mean that if a project would fall within those areas, automatically they are going to be exempt because they are in low VMT. So the government, in this case, would be, the state, the state government is authorizing the city to proceed with the approval of that project if that project would fall within the blue areas, which is called 15% or more below city average, um, from a service population perspective. This is another map that shows you the residential home-based VMT per capita. Again, you can look into the, the blue zones that you can make that determination. Now, this is the employee home-based map. Uh, if a project again would fall within the blue area, as you can see, there are only two zones in your city that would qualify for being a low VMT with respect to employees. So only in those two areas, a project could be exempt. If the project falls within the red areas or the green areas or the beige areas, they have to provide a VMT analysis. And the applicant or their consultant must document proper mitigation measures. All the mitigation measures have to be per the Bible of the California Air Resources Board, that there is a thick, you know, manual that, uh, gets, um, you know, gets updated every couple of years or so. So they can only, which we have created a table for you in your guidelines, only those mitigation measures are approved. So if somebody shows up that, oh, I wanna use something else to mitigate the potential impact of my project, they are not allowed, they're not acceptable, and legally they cannot challenge you as a municipal corporation in the state of California. The fourth criteria is, is this project, proposed project, is going to be within a transit priority area based on the official map of Southern California Association of Governments. You don't have any transit, any transit priority area. This is the official map from SCAG. As you can see, the city to your south has it, you don't have it. So nobody can claim this as a mitigation measure to exempt their project from going through the documentation and coming up with countermeasures and solutions for their proposed, uh, you know, action plan. We have also created a flow chart, you know, in the guidelines that tonight you are going to be ratifying. And basically like, you know, it directs any applicant which direction to go to based on what I mentioned earlier. 110 vehicles and on and on. So they can navigate through all these boxes to see how their project is going to be following. With that, I'll be more than happy to answer any questions you may have.
I guess one of my first questions is, what is the difference in cost? If there's a developer that they are gonna have to go through this other process that's not exempt, it's not an existing facility or whatever, what, what can the developer anticipate to be, uh, the difference in the cost? Or is it just going through the processes that's gonna cost more? Or is there actually a cost, a development cost associated with going to this new process?
For the screening portion of it, it's not gonna be an additional cost. Um, now for, if it's not exempt, um, you can give an estimate. Sure. Uh, this is what happens in a lot of cities after they have implemented the VMTs. Excellent question. The screening process is very simple. Either the project makes it exempt or doesn't make it. If the project does not make it because their VMT impact is significant, they have to come up with a series, an analysis that has to be submitted to the city. It has to be based on facts. And typically what the cities do, if they don't have a lot of in-house staff, typically they ask if they have on-call consultant just to review it and then to provide a technical memo with, with... With regard to the ramification of their application, with regard to the cost, it varies. I can go over all the state, it varies between two thousand five hundred dollars all the way to ten thousand dollars depending upon the locality. And and uh what have you, so so if a project applicant comes to the city for a project, quite frankly, that cost is not something that. Would preclude them from proceeding with a project because the cost is not that much. Uh unless their project does create a lot of impact that they cannot mitigate, then that's a. Different ballgame because they have to come up, they have to spend money. Because when you, your planning commission cannot approve those projects if they have significant impacts and they cannot mitigate it. So then they have to go through the environmental process of the state of California, which is, you know, um, you know, E I R in for. For state projects and E I S for federally, you know, if the project is within a federal area or, you know, a special zone. Then that's what they have to go through, so so that's the process that every city is taking.
Is it going to change the timeline on getting these projects through, is it the the? Versus the level of service methodology, is it more extensive or?
It all depends on the size of the project, but based on these guidelines and what we discussed. Issue for staff shouldn't take us that long, I think we're getting the hang of it. Uh we also had a lot of questions and he was be able, he was able to answer them, so I think. It's not gonna take that long, it's another, another, an extra layer of of the process. But it's not that lengthy, it's pretty quick, fairly easy.
And is it broken out, like right now, you you have your level of service and there's, there's ways that's determined, is? This new process, is it more difficult or is it just from a?
From my perspective, if it's exempt, it's pretty simple. From requiring a a V M T, if it's an E I R, I think it's the same time, it's this.
Because it's a consultant doing the work.
That is correct, yes.
By the way, if I may interject to answer your your question. Uh if a project is being presented to the city, they have to prepare traffic impact study or traffic impact analysis or a focused traffic study. So then they have to hire a consultant because applicants are not allowed to do it themselves, somebody has to be registered in Engineering California to. To to approve it, so therefore, it's the same, it's, you know, it's the same, they have to do that now, they do the V M T. You know, assessment if the city, uh you know, determines that their project has to have a mitigation, you know. Uh measure attached to it, because that's how your planning commission would condition the project based on those. So the level of effort, yes, is an extra one, your points are well taken, and that's why a lot of cities protested this. At the beginning, and that's why a lot of cities started late on this, so you're not the only one, by the way, a lot of cities had that issue. Oh, it's gonna kill a lot of projects, a lot of applicants are not gonna come, but but over the past, I would say, four years or so now, everything is just. People are getting acclimated to the process and the protocol and it's becoming just pretty common.
They're getting acclimated to it, but it's it's basically still just adding adding another layer of bureaucracy for them.
No question about it.
I'm done.
I was gonna say, you're not gonna win this one. Yeah, let me, public comments, scene nine, closed public hearing at seven fifty-six.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
I got a motion and a second, please vote. I got a motion and a second.
I'll second it.
Please vote.
Motion carries four zero.
Thank you, sir, you did a very fine job, you're a good salesman. Alright, next is. D, action item, discussion, action, approval, disapprove. Memorandum of Understanding M O U between the City of Imperial and Imperial Unified School District. For one full-time and one part-time school resource officer. Chief.
Mayor Protem Tucker Council, it's a renewal of the M O U that the City of Imperial Police Department has with the Imperial High School District. They've already reviewed and approved at their board level, uh it's 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 our return. Uh just a little bit of uh of an update to the version that you you've been given, it combines two different M O Us, one which was a part-time. And then one is a full-time and it accounts for their salary benefit hours and that which is covered by the school.
Alrighty, any other question? Entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
I got a motion and a second, please vote.
Motion carries four zero.
Alright, up next, D two. Adoption of Resolution Number twenty twenty-four dash forty-nine, adopting plans and specifications. And authorizing public bidding for the pavement rehabilitation of various roads, bid number twenty twenty-four dash oh six. Presenter David Dale, Public Service Director.
Um Mayor Protem and Council, I appreciate this time to to present this to you. Been here approximately four months and have received multiple complaints with regard to some roads that we have in the city. I've been noting those multiple complaints on a map and I drove the city and I drove those sites. Um noted the roads that I felt were the worst and I have a list of those roads. Did a, an engineer's estimate on the the roads that were in the absolute worst condition that I could see and it was about five million. Been looking for funding and it appears that we may have found a a funding source, at least to fund maybe sixty, sixty-five percent of the. Of the project and um essentially our um finance officer is not here, but. Um apparently, the city had been submitting um general fund. Funds to the successor agency um since to fiscal year twenty eighteen. The, we have calculated for three years, one point eight seven million that has been confirmed. Uh with the Office of State Audits and Evaluations and the Redevelopment Agency Administration, those funds are available and. There's yet to be confirmed for the past three years, which would be twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-two, twenty-three and twenty-three, twenty-four. Um so there, we know there isn't, um there is funding in above one point eight seven. Uh also, there is another fund that we plan to utilize, which is a E D A fund that's been in the city's accounts for years. That's intended for um economic development, that can be used for roads and in that we have around six hundred thousand. So we're, we're thinking we have approximately two point six million uh or so in funds that we could use. That were not accounted for in the in the budget because the budget was, this is something outside of the budget. Um and I think that uh the roads' conditions would um justify and warrant that. We we do this project, uh again, the, it's, it's roads that, I mean, if somebody asks, why, what? Why did you choose those roads, it would basically, I I've telling people, it's based on the complaints and my actual. Walking the roads and 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 viewing based on my twenty-four years of experience, what roads are in the absolute worst condition. Um there are additional roads that we won't be able to do um without, there's funding, there's, you know, more. Um that I wanna consider in future years. Um these are the roads again, and they're in um the Sunset Ranch Development. Uh Wildflower Development and Victoria Ranch area, uh trying to get. Some areas like in front of the dealership, Prebble Road, uh La Brujerie Road, north of Aton and Myrtle Road. Those are three kind of outlaying roads that are not in these developments that we wanna try to address if at all possible. So I'm open to any uh questions, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Mrs. Obeso, any question?
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution Number twenty twenty-four dash forty-nine.
I got a motion and a second, please vote.
Thank you for working so hard to find all that.
Motion carries four zero.
Thank you, I I meant to add that there will be an additional five hundred thousand that will be used from sewer funds to raise and lower the manholes. So the overall project estimates three point one million or so.
Oh, we need it, appreciate it, thank you.
Our roads need some major love.
Alright, next up, department reports, um Otan?
I have nothing to add tonight.
Mr. Dale?
I brief, some brief presentation, I have some photos I'd like to share. Um as you, uh I mentioned in meetings past, we had a crossroad in Fonzie Avenue rehabilitated. I'd like to um express a warm thank you to Pyramid Construction, who did a wonderful job in in doing this for the city. Um in these, in this area, uh this is the before picture that we took, okay, we'll go to the next one. So again, uh before, but on, right on top of the project, okay? And this is what it looks like now, so we're we're hoping that there, people are happy when they go to school in the fall. You know, they were having dust and all kinds of other issues, these are, these are more before and after, if you see the lower left picture, that's, I mean, it was really bad condition. Some of our other roads that I, we just were gonna address are in that similar condition in other areas that we were gonna address with the project you just approved. There's another picture, you can see our staff, what we did was, uh we, we did the raising, the lowering of the manholes and and the staff also. Did the striping, so we have, um thanks to your um, your leadership in purchasing equipment. We're able to do all that striping, that's thermoplastic striping, which will last a a long time and it looks great. And you got the, you see the city's trucks doing the lowering of the manholes and the raising of manholes there. There's a manhole that's being raised and just to give you an example of what it looks like. Okay, this is a video, um this is the equipment that you bought, I just wanna show you what it looks like in action, it's thermoplastic.
How hot is that?
That's very hot, it melts the plastic, it's sort of a plastic paint that it melts and puts on the, on the street and it does not come up and it doesn't, it doesn't fade over time. So that's, this is some of the equipment that you purchased that is now being used. Okay, uh this is a picture, we have a water plant, uh you're probably aware, we have a project going on at the water plant to expand the G A C filters, this is just a picture. Of the four, new four filters, there were four existing filters, now there's eight. And it looks like we're gonna be getting the filter media in the next week or two to put in in operation. These, these filters help with the water quality immensely and also reduce the T H Ms. Uh it's a picture of the um workers in the project putting in the pumps at the Clearwell Station. This is just to show you that the work is um going on and it is almost, that project is almost completing, should be a complete in the next month or so. And that would complete.
Thank you, David.
Thank you, sir, um Tony?
I wanna thank uh uh council member, uh Obeso Martinez and our mayor for joining us uh last Friday. At the uh movie at the pool, we utilized that movie at the pool event to kinda celebrate the city's one hundred and twentieth birthday. Uh they got to see a little bit of the madhouse that is the pool, uh we, we weren't expecting that many people to show up. Luckily, we didn't have to kick anybody out, uh cuz we were teetering on capacity, uh it was a little bit nerve-wracking, but. They were, they were troopers, they they passed out uh over a hundred and fifty cupcakes that we had for free to the public. Um we also had a cake there, just kind of mini celebration. Uh I felt it was important to kind of uh celebrate the city's birthday, it's a, it's a huge milestone of a hundred twenty years and it actually fell on the date. So uh July twelfth was the actual birthday of the city, so, uh next event coming up. We have our uh end of the summer bash, which is uh August ninth from seven to ten. Again, you guys will uh really be receiving invites from our office. Uh that will invite you to the, to that end and that kinda just ends our summer programming, uh everything, aquatics and rec site. Um and also to kind of uh echo David's uh. Comments on roads being improved in Sunset Ranch, we did receive the uh bids, did come in for the Sunset Park uh improvement. The shades and different things, so we'll be presenting those to you at the next meeting for award. So we, we, uh that neighborhood needs a lot of love and TLC, so we're, we're uh with roads and parks and different things. We're uh, we're working on uh doing what we can to improve that area.
Alright, thank you, I did see some water there, are you guys still trying to water to get grass to come up or what?
We have with, right now, we have a, we have plans to reseed again on the outs, on the walls, uh north, south and uh. East, west, to see if we can get some uh seed to germinate, um it's never a quick to try and get something in there. Uh the uh route we're gonna take for lighting on the, on the west side is gonna be solar. So that what we bring to you next council meeting is gonna be renewable energy that also has a. Uh forever life maintenance component into it for uh like seventy dollars a year. So the company that we're going to be bringing back to you uh for approval to purchase. Actually takes care and monitors all the lights that we install uh for seventy dollars uh a year. And if, and and they take care of the maintenance if we keep the uh service agreement with them going. So I feel it's beneficial for somebody else to monitor their product and and also incorporate renewable energy when we can in in different projects.
Now, how will they monitor them?
So they have uh systems in the actual pole that sends signals when la- lights or lamps are out. Uh and then they send their own technicians to come in and repair, they'll send us parts that need to be replaced. At no expense to us as long as we keep that maintenance uh agreement with them for that small amount a year.
Alright, thank you. Mr. Alex?
I think the report, just the hmm position for cyber administrator is open for applicants to public. Uh it's gonna be closed on the twenty-fourth and we might have a new cyber administrator for the next council meeting, thank you very much.
Appreciate it. Chief?
Nothing much, the, with with the help of H R and our background officer, we have an officer getting sworn in on Monday morning. This will leave us with one recently created vacancy and there's already one in the hopper for that position.
Perfect, thank you. Chief Lancer?
Good evening, thank you, and uh so I will be out of the office from July twenty-sixth to uh August twelfth. Back, back in the office, August twelfth, uh and then um more uh extra hot weather this weekend. One sixteen is what's being expected uh on Saturday and Sunday will be about the same, so. Hydrate up.
Thank you. Kristen?
Uh no new hires to report today, however, uh we do have a couple of our new positions approved just last uh meeting. That are currently open, uh like Alex mentioned, the cybersecurity awareness, uh I'm sorry, cybersecurity administrator. And then also the accountant, both open till July twenty-fourth, and like Chief mentioned, uh we also have our police officer recruitment currently open. That's all for today.
Alright, thank you. Attorney, Katie? Nothing? Ada?
Just observation, I see the guys out there at Sky Ranch and then on the other side, Zandalwood Glen, cuz that's my pathway to go to work. I, it's early, they're out there, so good job of the parks, rec and public services there. Um I think the concerns have been heard and hopefully they've been taken care of, so thank you for that. And then um the birthday was hot, but. But you know what, um the staff does such a great job, I mean, an amazing job. You guys are out there sweating and dying in the heat and you can't go jump in the pool, right, but you guys did an amazing job, I really respect. The time and effort that you guys put into that, um the community is happy, it shows and they're just. Happy to do something with the city and and the kids are enjoying the pools, it was, it was beautiful to see. Um so thank you for that and, yeah, cupcakes, it was fun.
Nothing to report for me.
All righty, Stacy?
Uh, nothing to report, I do have a personal message to what I'll call council's volunteer photographer and delivery driver. Uh, quick, uh, sending out some love and some hopes for a speedy recovery.
Thank you, all right, Mr. Marita?
Nothing for me.
I didn't wanna forget you. All right, thank, I'll adjourn the meeting until our next one, which it might say down here. Uh, August seventh at seven.